All right, we will go ahead and call to order the meeting for the Mayor of Oxford Audit November 4th, 2025. Accept the motion to adopt the man, uh, agenda of the meeting?
With additions.
That's right. We do have some changes and additional additions to the agenda. First is item two C, which is request permission to approve engagement letter from Frank's, Frank's Wilhelm, Heygood CPAs for the fiscal year 25, 26 audits. And then on the consent agenda is three B, BII, request permission to accept the resignation of employee in the Oxford Utilities Water and Sewer Division. And item three D, BII, I R eight, request permission for employee to attend the Code Academy in Mobile, Alabama on December 7th through the 12th, 2025 at an estimated cost of $2,100. And then last is item six E, which is request permission to approve a professional service contract with Cardi Architect for renovation of Development Services Annex Building. With those additions to the agenda, accept the mission to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh huh.
Mayors report, real brief, the mayor in Hollis Green, our COO is there in DC, meeting with our legislators and hopefully getting us some money once the government does finally open back up. So that is why I get to run the meeting tonight is my privilege. Also wanted to announce that the Christmas lighting, Christmas light lighting will be on Thursday, November 13th at 6:00 PM and Mayor Griswold will be here to turn the lights on, which is always a fun, fun time for our city. And that is all I have for the mayor's report. Request permission to approve the minutes of regular meeting on October 21st, 2025?
Amazely approved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
You oppose, thank you. Request permission to approve accounts for all city departments.
So move.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Uh.
You oppose. Uh, two C is request permission to approve engagement letter from Frank's, Frank's Wilhelm, Heygood CPA for fiscal year 25, 26 audit.
Yes, um, just kind of a housekeeping item. This is our engagement letter. Um, this gets us ready for our upcoming audit for the fiscal year that just ended, 930, and the one coming up, getting in 26.
All right, motion?
So move.
All in favor?
Uh.
You oppose.
Thank you.
Ask that the board consider the consent agenda with the two additions on it.
Motion, consider consent agenda with additions.
All in favor?
Uh.
You oppose, thank you all. All right, uh, four A is request permission to approve an amendment to the E subpoena program of the judge's orders for procedure for Oxford Police Department, Oxford Municipal Court, this did.
This is just one more little thing towards our, our progress that we've made so far to modernize the court. This allows us to add the police department as a tenant within that program, which will then let them use the same program that we use to send affidavits and warrants back and forth to the judges and get them signed. It is secure and we can pay for this out of the ABC budget.
Awesome. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
You oppose. Do a great job, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, um, this will be Development Services, third reading of vote on proposed ordinance amendment, zoning map for case 3256 of the Act Burn Holdings LLC to rezone 324 plus or minus acres of property located on Mississippi Highway 7, Mississippi Highway 30, Tardor Lane, being further identified as PPI in's 3520, 3531, 4425, 4506, and 4635.
So nothing really has changed since your prior conversations. I do want to point out in your pocket, you do have a copy of an updated exhibit that reflects that additional buffer behind Heather Tony's property and her neighbors that are there, and that's a 250 foot buffer in addition to the conservation areas that were already previously proposed. So.
Board has any questions for me? Here none, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Just a couple of things. One, I appreciate the buffer and the conservation. But I want to say that suburban multifamily, I understand the request is sort of showing that they have suburban multifamily, one plot or one section under undeveloped, and it's just sort of in their radius, is that correct, Ben, not overall?
That's correct.
And most of our suburban multifamily is developed at this point in time.
I think that's fair to say, the majority of it is.
And it ranges from PUDs to out at Grand Oaks, all the way to student developments throughout the city.
Correct.
In our vision 2037, there's a, an emphasis to reduce suburban multifamily.
I, I think there was an emphasis to reduce suburban multifamily zoned property, but also provided and concentrated that energy towards mixed use commercial developments.
Right, encourage mixed use.
That's right.
And with this particular area, with suburban corridor being right by, as it's zoned now, suburban corridor is right by Highway 7.
Correct.
They could place most, anythings within that area that they wish to in suburban multifamily.
They could request a special exception for multifamily, that's right. It's similar to like the Ruby, which is under construction back behind Tractor Supply. You know, it's the Ruby and then the Pearl, you know, but the Ruby in particular is in property that was owned suburban, suburban corridor, suburban center.
And the, as it is now, goes from suburban corridor to neighborhood residential, I mean, excuse me, to T and B?
No, it goes to neighborhood residential.
Okay, neighborhood residential.
That's right.
And in that, they can place single family dwellings, they can place.
Attached housing, duplexes, quadplexes, they could have townhomes.
And to date, there, well, as, as we heard last week, there are no plans to develop this at this, this time pending or anything else.
Yeah, we have not, I think that's what the applicant stated.
All right, I, in general, what I expressed, that's why I didn't bring it up last week, because I wanted to think about it. I, I think we need to pause, pump the brakes, take our time and evaluate it. If there was a plan before us, it would be one thing. But there's no plan before us, and if it was a PUD, then we'd know what the uses were and things of that nature. And I'm just in my, on my thinking about it and studying it, along with studying the entire zoning of suburban multifamily, where it's located throughout the city of Oxford, just, I would encourage us to, to take it slow and pump the brakes a little bit on, on this. And if it, in two to three years, if it starts being developed and there's a plan to get it developed, then come to us with that plan and ask us to rezone. That's my opinion. I just wanted to state that.
Okay. Any other questions for Ben? All right, in order to make the proposed ordinance amendment, need a motion in a second. I'm hearing.
So what are you, I guess, what are you asking?
I'm not asking anything, I'm just stating, that's my thoughts on the matter.
I believe this was not, the plan wasn't going to be, I mean, five years a minimum? Are they here?
They're here.
Well, there could be plans in two years, there could be plans in five years, there could be plans in 10 years. At this point in time, the way suburban multifamily is developed and the amount of suburban multifamily developed throughout the city, I just want to take a pause, in my opinion, I am, in my mind, I would like to take a pause on rezoning what is now neighborhood residential to suburban.
So looking, looking at the big map, if you look at the way it is now, the front 99 acres of neighborhood residential and the back 176, I'm looking at page 144.
Yeah.
Is your angst the suburban, that 47 acres of suburban multifamily not being neighborhood residential?
Yes, my angst is, is the total of 85 acres of additional suburban multifamily when you got under the current, you got suburban corridor, which again, special exception, you can do with what you wish, um, you can ask for a special exception, but as we heard, it's rooftops, right, rooftops. You can still put rooftops in neighborhood residential, and you can put a lot of them, you put quadplexes, you can put single family. What you can't put is another pearl, which in my mind is for college student housing in the way, again, just my thoughts. But you could put it in that, under the, where it's currently zoned, you could put it in the suburban corridor with a special exception. The 45 acres currently, as it is now, you could put some with a special exception, then you could put single family residence, you could put quadplexes, you could put duplexes and things on the 99 acres. I just, if you had a plan before me, I may think differently. But I don't have a plan, and if you want to come back in two years, five years, if I'm still around, you know, that's fine, but at this point in time, at this point in juncture, where the city's at, the suburban multifamily and, and the buildings, I'm, that, my opinion is just, I would rather see a PUD, plan, something rather than just automatically saying, sure, here's 85 acres of suburban multifamily when we got neighborhood residential in its place. And I know they're going to increase it under the new plan, um, and I get it, but again, it would maybe different if I saw a plan of what was going there rather than just doing it because there's no suburban multifamily in the area.
Paul or David, could y'all elaborate on this by chance? Like, just, I, I don't know what, what, I obviously don't have a plan.
In, in my opinion, the problems we've run into in Oxford is that we do it on a, we wait until things are developed, and then you piecemeal it. And y'all approve rezonings here and there and these little things instead of having a piece of land like this that we can go ahead and say, okay, this is how we want to do it. And then I can go spend a lot of money with planners to get it done, but I'm, I'm not going to go spend money with a planner based on, and that'd be hundreds of thousands of dollars, based on the come that says, okay, if I spend all this money and then I'm going to say, then come to y'all and say, can I do what I'm, what I'm asking to plan? So this is looking at an overall plan, and, and I know you, you mentioned the Ruby, the Ruby's a great example, we're, we, we did have to come to y'all for a special exception, we got the special exception. It's what's needed there because you got commercial, then multifamily, then the single family. But the problem is, is that I get complaints from homeowners that didn't know there was going to be multifamily there. And I would much rather have a plan that, I mean, I can go in and tell you, that's what's going to need to be built between, you don't just go from commercial to single family, you don't go from commercial just to a quad, I mean, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. And so, I mean, my, my vision for this is you're going to have suburban, which will be a lot of retail, then you're going to have some office behind that, then you'll have a multifamily, then you'll have some, some of that multifamily may not be used, but I don't, I, there's, there's a lot of land you've got to work with that, yes, I can go with less dense, and there won't be all that done for multifamily. But I can't say right now that land is, I mean, it's rough, and you've got to work with the land, and you've got to work with the land planner, but you've got to have some overall zoning characteristics so you can make a plan so that I can spend the time over the next three years to do that. And that's, that, to me, that's the mistake we're making on a lot of these other places where we end up with a bunch of multifamily, and you hadn't looked at overall plan, you don't have any commercial around. I mean, that's the, I, I'm, I'm, I hear what Brian's saying, but I think what Brian's saying is wrong, uh, in my opinion. And, and not, and, and I know you mentioned rooftops. If you said, okay, you just need us to cover that up with, with the single family or some fourplexes, you're not going to get the commercial you need. You, you just, you've got to have some multifamily in there to get the commercial. And we can, um, we can say all the bad things about multifamily, there, the reason the issues with multifamily is not because of the Ruby, the Ruby's a great example of how multifamily should be done. It's done with commercial around it, it's done in a mixed use development, it's got a lot of things around it that can serve those, um, those tenants, they also have direct access to a major highway, so they're not clogging up small roads. This is the same thing here, um, we're not creating another Old Taylor or South Lamar. Um, and so, in my, I mean, this is a huge opportunity for us to plan this right, um, but I need y'all's support in getting this so that I can then go to a planner and spend a lot of money to get it planned right. Um, anyway.
David, uh, so if we took your, with your proposal, you're going from 176 acres to 52 acres of suburban residential.
Mm-hmm.
Then you're going 99 acres to 122 of neighborhood residential, it's just kind of shifting.
Right.
That's not that big a change. You have 38 acres basically off of Highway 30, right behind your proposed suburban corridor. What happens if that 47 acres of suburban multifamily was in that 122 of the neighborhood residential?
Well, then you're not allowed to do, I mean, I can't, I can't do a land plan based on getting a special exception. So I, you, you would have to, you wouldn't, you need some, if, I mean, if you looked at the quad that we sent, there is zero, when we say zero, there's zero multifamily in this quad that's available, none. And you've got two major highways at Highway 30 and Highway 7. So if there was ever a spot for multifamily in our town, this is the spot. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a no brainer, I mean, you've got two major highways, we're bordering two major highways, there's only three highways in all of Oxford, there's Highway 6, Highway 30, and Highway 7. We're, we are fronting two of those highways. I mean, I, I don't know what, what more you could ask for, but, but you've got to have, and I know Brian mentioned about, well, you can always come back for a special exception, but, but there would be no need, you're, you're allowing everybody to know what's coming, there wouldn't be a need for a special exception. And, and that would be y'all's point, if I ever, I came back or I died and somebody else was developing this problem, you'd be able to say, okay, there's no need for a special exception here because you've got this multifamily here. And so then you're preventing these things of quote unquote surprises for anybody that's already gone in by trying to anticipate what's going to happen, and I promise you, no one's ever complained to me about downzoning. So the odds of this, you know, all getting developed, it's not going to happen, but I, I will have happy people all around me when I go from, in some areas of that suburban multifamily, not building it up as much suburban multifamily. And it, it sets the project up for success.
Ben, I think one point of clarification.
Yeah.
So the special exception actually would be for ground floor residential, so you could already do over floor residential by right. So you can have multifamily, I just want, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, that's right.
The special exception would be only for an all residential development.
Right. But, but like an example is, we, we did, um, the, um, the Pearl, what we call the Pearl Phase 2, and it has some, some retail in the bottom, but it still would have required a special exception.
Because there's some residential.
Because there's residential on the bottom.
Right.
I mean, so even that great project would still require a special exception.
Because there's residential on the bottom, along with commercial.
That's right, and I could not have done that project with all commercial at the bottom. It would not have been feasible. And, and let me say this too, nothing's going to prevent, I mean, I, I think all y'all would support if I did some commercial underneath that residential in the multi, suburban multifamily, y'all would be supportive of that. And do it similar to Pearl Phase 2, where you, you had single family on the bottom, but you, you put a little bit of commercial retail in there to create that, that mixed use feel. Um. I mean, y'all can see the, that, that's the vision we, we have for. And it's just a great opportunity, you've got 324 acres, but the one thing is, the one, the worst thing we can do is say, well, let's wait and say five years from now, let's just see what happens and let's just develop it and see how it develops. That's how you end up with an Old Taylor Road, that's how you end up with a South Lamar. You need planning where then, a developer like I can then go hire a land planner, take the zoning we have and then create that master plan we need.
I, I do agree that you've got to have the time to be able to plan this out correctly. And I know that you, last, last meeting I had asked about the additional buffer and I believe that buffer is actually even bigger now from the neighbors on Highway, Highway Seven. If nobody else has any questions, I'd make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Motion to approve, second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have two notes. Five, four, two.
All right. All right. Request for city utilities, which would normally include a site plan approval and a special exception, as provided in section 5.6, building facades for case number 3274, your development for space box flex space, property located on County Road 101.
Good afternoon.
Thanks.
This is a request to extend city utilities to proposed development on whole, old Highway Seven, so County Road 101 on the, on North Lamar outside of city limits. The subject property measures just over five acres. The applicant's proposing to construct 36,000 square feet of a flex space intended for small businesses in the area. The proposed site plan complies with many of the requirements laid out in the Development Code. Of note, the development is proposing metal paneling on several building facades facing away from the street. The code permits this by special exception for developments within city limits. Engineering has provided comments on this project related to access, water and sewer and stormwater management. The planning commission did unanimously recommend approval of the site plan at the commission's meeting on October 13th with the eight conditions listed in the staff report. There was discussion and there was expressed concern related to, at that time, the proposed use of corrugated metal paneling on those facades. In the time between then and now, the applicant has submitted updated architectural detail sheets, which are included in your packet, which show kind of a, what's called structure rock, metal paneling, it's kind of a stucco look on the, the metal paneling and replacement of that corrugated metal. This substitution is satisfactory to staff. We would recommend approval of a special exception for its use if this development were in city limits. And so as a result, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of this request, the exception to city utilities, which would normally include both the requested site plan approval and the special exception for the space box flex space with the eight conditions listed in your memo. Happy to answer any questions.
James? All right, board, you got any questions for James?
I guess just one question from the, I know our sewer capacity is running near its limit in that area.
So they're, they're actually using on-site treatment. So they, they seem to have a part of proof on-site treatment.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
opposed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. James?
Hey, Donna, request permission to advertise for bids for a platform sky lift for the out-maintained shop.
Yes, this is a stationary lift, which we do not have, and it was put on our current budget for this project.
Motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Mark, consider a proposal from Brown Insurance EMC for the City of Oxford Property Insurance.
Yes, so Brown Insurance is our local property insured agent. Tatum's here tonight. Every year he goes out, takes our policy, looks at it and to make sure we have the best policy possible. Last year we bid it and EMC was the only respondent, we bid it publicly. This year we added several large properties, including the new police station, pool, and a couple of other properties. We now have over $139 million in value insurable property. Our deductible's $25,000 per occurrence, with the exception of wind, which is $75,000, earthquake 10%. The new total, with the increased inventory and the, we had to update some valuation of the property, it's a 6% increase across the board for property this year. So the total premium is $341,000 and $209. The renewal date is November 11th, so we, Tatum and I talked about it briefly, but we're, we're quickly approaching an annual premium that may make more sense to self-insure. Right now we're paying close to 0.25% of our insured value in annual premium, which is kind of on the fringe of where you might think about going self-insured, so we're going to look into that a little bit before this time next year.
Okay.
But right now, recommend approval.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Consider a change order number four for Century Construction for renovation of the historic City Hall project.
So this is a, this is a large change order. It's 100% requested by the owners, which is the city. The mayor described it best when she said every time we pull a ceiling tie down, it's a $25,000 repair, this, this needed. And any remodel, we feel like the best time to improve these systems is right now. The, this, obviously this building was constructed in 1860 and it's had three major renovations over the years and many, many minor renovations. And there's a lot of stuff to untangle inside this building. I don't know if y'all walked in and saw the basement, gives you a glimpse of a spider web of all kinds of stuff going on.
Wires.
Wires. So the goal, it's a large change order, we're going to, we're trying to make this building comparable to modern buildings, especially with technology. We want to rewire all, every single data jack in the building, new HVAC, controllers and wires, new security cameras, access controls, a host of other repairs that have been.
Upgrade our technology.
Upgrade everything. $243,000.
All right, I'll, I understand that's a big number, $243,000.
It's a big number.
Also, y'all have got to remember too, that the electrical system grid that this was put on, our electrical system in this building is obsolete now and what was meant for the 1930s, 1940s, we're way past that. I mean, we're running computer, a lot of technology, a lot of things. Care plugs in the heater and it shorts out a whole section. She goes in there to make coffee and the lights flicker. So it's kind of like an old Chevy Blazer when you do the left button, windshield wipers go on. So I think it's time to upgrade and I'm recommending that we do this change order. But I need a motion.
So moved, because I don't want y'all, I don't want us burning down.
Yeah.
And I understand all buildings.
Right, the time to do it's now.
It is now.
Now, I mean, don't want to tear up and have to go back and do it again.
And it's historical property, we need to keep it.
We don't want to do any work for 15 or 20 years in this building after this.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Request permission to advertise for this for the Conference Center line project. Oh, we just did this.
We, we hired the firm last, at the last meeting, in this meeting, we're asking for permission to advertise.
Okay. Well, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Six E, don't forget. Request permission to approve professional services contract with McCarty Architects for the renovation at the Development Services Annex building.
I apologize for the layback, I just got this proposal this morning. This is for the Annex building next to Development Services and we're going to, we're planning on doing it like we did the Conference Center, we're redoing all the finishes and we're using, we're wanting to use the same firm, they did a really good job helping us with that. It's a $10,000 not to exceed, hope to stay under, just ask for permission to accept the contract.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Request permission to approve the invoice for emergency sewer repairs on Fudge Town Road.
Yeah, so remember back in the summer, you guys authorized us to move ahead with an emergency repair to our sewer interceptor line, which runs just north of the sewage treatment plant, actually runs underneath the residential subdivision. The old line is about 50 years old, concrete was, was starting to deteriorate and so we, we're finally able to get that work done, it's operational, safe. The invoices have been included in your packet, the total, I think, $469,000 and some change for your approval.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right. Second reading and hearing for the proposed ordinance change, Article Four, Section 114-39, 118, and 119, code of ordinance.
Yeah, so this ordinance change, like we discussed last time, establishes a, an annually, an annual approved schedule of fees by you guys that replaces the, the table of fees that's been in the ordinance for almost over 15 years now. So what we're requesting is, is a schedule of fees be presented to you guys at the beginning of each fiscal year that would be approved for the connection of water and sewer fees. Also, it alters the policy of how those connections are made in, in that right now, city forces on the water and sewer department essentially do all of the work, all of the labor, material, equipment and everything. And, and so we're losing money and most of the time, a lot of the time, we have to hire that work out because our guys don't have the equipment or the capability to do it. So this ordinance change would, would alter that policy to put the onus of that work on the owner developer to make actually that connection, except for the small water meters and things like that.
Okay. Just being a public earner, is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up and speak on this subject? Yeah. All right, here, none. All right, y'all.
Make a motion?
Second.
To approve?
Yes.
That is.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Consider change order number one and payment application number two for the South Lamar Boulevard pedestrian improvement project.
Yes, so the change order is for them to pour concrete at night, which you have proven to do and we've asked them to do on a couple of occasions, primarily the curb and gutter, where they were having to take up almost all of the road with their curb machine. And so the change order is to cover the added expense of batching the concrete at night, paying their guys overtime, renting lights, all those things.
Got a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion taken, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank y'all. Consider request for Oakmont Oxford LLC to release performance bond 4462067 for the asphalt striping in Seminole Bluff subdivision, Villa West Phase Two. John?
Yeah, so this is that subdivision off Thacker Road, down there to the south. The asphalt has been in inspected for a while, so what they're asking is just to release that bond that covers the asphalt and roadway striping and we are in agreement with that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Consider request for Oakmont LLC release performance bond 4462068, Seminole Bluff, Phase Two.
Same subdivision, this is just for the sidewalk constructed in that subdivision.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Request, consider change order number one to reload, reload, relocate contract A Anderson Road well number three and number four to M Trade Park.
Yeah, so one of our Anderson Road projects was to drill two new wells at the Anderson Road site, and if you recall, we issued a stop work order on that, decent contaminants found. In the meantime, we've sampled M Trade Park where we know we want to put a new treatment plant and samples have come back clean. What we would like to do is take this existing contract that you've approved, the contractor has agreed to change the sites at no cost, the well depths are going to be the same, so all of it, he hasn't mobilized yet, so this change order is just to change the site from Anderson Road up to M Trade Park. And as soon as you approve that, we'll go ahead and start on the well permits for the, for the M Trade site and get him moving in that direction.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Request permission to reject the bids from Unit Kent for hydraulic or acid and accept the next lowest bid from Brent Tag for the 2025, 2026 material bill bids in relation to the water and wastewater treatment chemicals.
So hydrofluoric acid is a chemical that we use in the treatment of our drinking water and we receive material bids on it every year. Univar Kent was a little bitter this year, but they have not been able to provide us with it as specified in the material bids, namely in how they specify it. We, we requested in these huge crates that we can hook all our machinery and plumbing up to, and they were not willing to do that. So what we have, what we are asking to do is to accept the next low bid of Brent Tag, who has, I said, and I regret if I'm wrong, that they would be able to supply that according to our specifications.
And they're, they currently supply it.
And they are currently supplying it to us anyway.
Oh.
It's, it's the same supplier.
All right.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, ask the board if we consider a second session.
Move we consider a second session?
opposed.
All in favor?
Aye.
The board is now considering.